Ladies and gentlemen, there is an agenda in front of you. I would ask for an approval of that agenda, or a change as applicable.
Roll call.
Not yet. Ah, yes. I'll figure this out yet. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Campana?
Here.
Commissioner Frazier?
Here.
Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Mayor Protem Reynolds?
Here.
Mayor Stonehouse?
Here.
Now, I will ask for an approval of the agenda. Or a change here, too. Commissioner Hill?
I move that we approve the agenda. As submitted.
We need to make an addition.
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry.
Commissioner Campana, please.
I would like to add an item to the consent agenda. That item would be to schedule a public hearing for the next regular city commission meeting to consider adoption of the Parks and Recreation Master Plan.
Is that a motion?
That is a motion that I would like.
And can I may have a second?
Second.
Thank you. The item is added. We will make that three November. That means we have a motion. We have a second on the floor. All those in favor, please vote yes. Yes?
Yes.
Anyone opposed? No. Hearing none, seven to zero. That brings it to announcements. And one of the key announcements to make is that our camera control unit is out of order, which means what we're seeing at home, for our viewers at home, is one simple wide shot of the dais only. And that's the only shot that'll be here for the meeting. So regretfully, there's a new one coming, but it's not here yet, so that's all we can do with it. That does impact on the agenda as you see it, because we will be unable to give the Presquale Park Advisory Committee report, because that report is largely on PowerPoint. And that PowerPoint, in turn, would be switched over the show on all of the screens in this room, and it also would then be on the television at home. So if nobody can see what the report is about, it doesn't make a lot of sense to do the report tonight. So what we're going to do is just simply reschedule that and present that at the earliest opportunity that we have all of the video systems up and working, so all of us really derive, including and mostly, I think, for our viewers at home, that they'll get all of the information. Boards and committees, appointments. Pleasure of the commission. Mayor Protem?
I move that we appoint Jeremy Otway to the Downtown Development Authority for a term ending January 1, 2023, and Barbara Wright to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a term ending February 15, 2022.
Is there a second? Commissioner Frazier?
Second.
Mayor Protem, any discussion?
No discussion.
Commissioner Frazier? All those commissioners in favor, please signify by voting yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed by voting no. Hearing none. The motion passes, seven to zero. That brings us to public comments. Comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Please state your name and physical address when making public comments. And if you desire to speak to an agenda item, please so indicate, and we will put you down for it. Anyone desiring to approach, to speak to the commission?
Hi. My name is Amanda Bierman. I live at 410 East Ohio Street. I'm also the Vice President of Marquette Junior Hockey. I'm here to talk about Lakeview Arena. A couple of things I just want to make sure I cover. Our organization has over 430 youth enrolled that spend nine months out of the year at Lakeview Arena. Most of our kids are there three to four times per week. They are, this is basically their major recreation throughout the winter. We have numerous tournaments throughout the winter. We hold a 10 and 12 youth showcase, a holiday tournament, a Betty Beckman Memorial Tournament, a District Eight Tournament, the NIHL Tournament, a Kick It To Cancer Tournament, and then that doesn't even include our out-of-town teams that come here to play on a regular basis. And then the past two years, we've held two state tournaments, two years in a row. These tournaments average 20 to 40 teams that they bring into our area. That's 140 families that come in at a time, that come in to, stay in our hotels, eat at all of our restaurants, and see Lakeview Arena. So I think it's time that we do the things that need to be done at Lakeview Arena to make it be a showplace and a showcase for our city, instead of letting it be rundown. It's not cleaned. It's in disrepair. There's a bathroom that's had X tape over it for weeks. There's another bathroom where they took the sink out to replace it. They took out a big old sink to replace it, put a little sink on the wall, and left a big hole in the wall. Like, literally, a kid could crawl into the hole practically that's in the wall there. So, and this is how we're representing to all of these people who come into our city. And I understand Lakeview Arena is an expensive building, but it also generates a lot of revenue for the city in that way. You know, the other thing is, the organization, our youth are there typically from 4:30, 5:00 till 9:00 PM to 9:30, five nights a week, and starting at 8:00 AM on both Saturday and Sunday. The supervisor for the building works 8:00 to 4:00 or 9:00 to 5:00, Monday through Friday. There is no supervisor in that building when the majority of the user groups are in the building. It seems to me that the right thing to do would be to have a supervisor in the building, supervising the staff that's there, making sure that things are getting done, and the garbages are getting empty, and the place is getting cleaned, and there to problem-solve for the people who are utilizing the building during the hours that the building is actually in use. Even if they worked a 1:00 to 9:00 or a 2:00 to 10:00 shift, they would still be able to communicate with the rest of the city departments for several hours a day, but they would also be able to serve their user group. But for as long as I can remember, as long as I've been an adult, there's not been a supervisor there during the business hours of the building, which seems very odd to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else desiring to address the commission?
My name is Kristen Cambenzi, and I live at 1135 County Road 492 in the township of Marquette. While I'm not a city resident, a few of the others with me are. I was also a member of the local organizing committee for Craft Hockeyville 2016, and a member of the Friends of Lakeview Arena, and hope that, even though I'm not speaking on behalf of those groups, that it might offset me not being a city resident. The group of us, we created the Facebook event to get other concerned citizens to come to the meeting, not because we think the city has misspent, misused, or misplaced the Hockeyville money. That was one. I mean, that would imply that the money was spent. Our purpose in coming here tonight is to hear directly from the city, even though it's not on the agenda, what plans are for Lakeview and what the Hockeyville money will be spent on, and when it will be spent. We appreciate what the city has invested with the Johnson Control Grant at Lakeview. We know that a lot of upgrades that were completed are not something that you can easily see when you walk into the building. We're well aware that not everything can be seen. But we do appreciate all the energy efficiencies and things that were added to the building over the summer. However, this does not have anything to do with the Hockeyville money that the community worked so hard to obtain. A month was spent voting for Lakeview to win, followed by months of planning for the big game and all the events surrounding it. I mean, we did fun runs, we did galas, we did all kinds of stuff to really help with the, help make it a great event. The community came together and put their blood, sweat, tears, and heart into making the event successful and showcasing Lakeview and the city of Marquette in the best possible light. We cleaned and painted every inch of Lakeview until it shined for its national TV debut. We, the community, would like to see some of the fruits of our labors realized. This is why the people want to see something done with the Hockeyville money. We understand that the city is trying to maximize their funds and being diligent about how it's been spent, but we were awarded this almost three years ago. And we just hope that we can see something done soon. We, the community, still love Lakeview Arena. We are very grateful to the city of Marquette and the commission for the money that was put into Lakeview with the Johnson Controls and the master plan that has over $1.7 million of improvements that will be added to Lakeview Arena at some point in time. We appreciate the time, care, and deliberation that has gotten into seeing that the money from Hockeyville is used in the best way possible. Our hope is that the city commission know that the community supports Lakeview Arena, and that perhaps they might be willing to allow the community to show their support by allowing groups like the Friends of Lakeview to help with their master plan efforts and complete or pay for a project on their list, while the city focuses on the best way to utilize and maximize the remaining Hockeyville money. The Friends of Lakeview did offer...
Ma'am, I'm sorry. You're running out of time.
That's fine.
Thank you. Anyone else desiring to address the commission? Anyone else?
My name is Sonia Delles, and I live at 1441 M28 East, out in Choctaw Township. I had been a member of the city, basically, my whole life, up until the last four years, when we moved out to Harvey. I, along with the other two, have concerns, the same as them. I've had, been involved with Marquette Junior Hockey and have children involved there for the last 20-some years now. And spending eight, nine months out of your year in one place that you are watching now after we won the Hockeyville, kind of deteriorate, it's disappointing. Along with that bathroom that's been closed, not just for weeks, but it's been over a month now, that one bathroom has been closed. If you look at all the bathrooms in Lakeview, for the women's bathrooms at least, that's the only bathroom that you could actually get into a handicap stall if you were in a wheelchair, if you had a walker, if you had any kind of assistance you needed. That's the only one that you can get into, and it's been closed for over a month. Three of the locker room doors, since Hockeyville, they had to take down some of the craft stuff, signage and all that. Three of the doors, the paint has just peeled off. Finished peeling it off. There's hockey, or guys that work the Zamboni Room there, three of them usually at night, standing around just waiting to clear the ice. You know, when we were going through and getting this all together since January 2nd to come here, we found a lot of conflicting information. Your master plan, we were told that you guys didn't want to, you were holding off so that you wouldn't use money twice on projects. Which, okay, fine, but one of the projects that you stated that you had done was renovated Zamboni. But in your new master plan, it states that part of the plan is to get a new Zamboni. Kind of sounds like you're being redundant there with money. You know, just making the littlest upgrades that people can see, whether it be putting new boards up for, that you can, Mac could control electronically from his office, computerized, so that you can see the locker room assignments for the whole day on Saturday or Sunday, instead of just half a day at a time with a dry erase marker. I mean, there's a lot of other rinks around the UP that have that. You know, just doing the smallest little things, changing out the concession area, so that you have flat tables that when you put a drink down on it, it doesn't tip over. Kids can sit there and do their homework there. A lot of kids go there from the time they get off of school. They might be there until 9:00 at night. It's also figure skaters that are using it, too, and, you know, they try to get homework done while they're there, and they can't, because you don't have a flat surface to write on. You know, just simple, small things would help a lot. I mean, we understand and we're appreciative of all the big items that you had, did the compressor, the dehumidifying or humidification system and everything. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, I'm Cory Moyer. I'm at 2817 Granite Point. I actually wasn't going to speak today, but I was part of the Hockeyville Board. I was one of the board members, and looking at all of you, I would love to challenge you to go spend some time at Lakeview, because I practically live there. I don't know if I've ever seen you guys there. And actually, I get embarrassed talking to the NHL right now, because I made great connections with a lot of them and a lot of people at Craft, and they ask me, "How's it going? What are you doing?" And I can't say anything. I, we've tried to just updo the concession area, as she mentioned, and for some reason, there's a fight to do it, so kids can do homework, so they can put stuff on the table. So the people will stop coming up to us saying, "Hey, what about all that money you raised outside of what Hockeyville gave you that we raised separate? Hasn't anything been done with that?" And for some reason, there's barricades, and why, I don't know, because I don't know what you guys, your master plan is, but all we want is some stuff in that arena that will make it look like we won Hockeyville, because we did. And we spent so much time, the city, to do it, and we spent so much effort, volunteer like you guys do here. And it just breaks my heart that these kids aren't going to get to see it, possibly, because we can't just come together and make a couple of things happen. I know that building has got thousands and thousands of, hundreds of thousands of repairs it needs, but we're just asking to spend the money that they raised on things that can benefit the kids today. That's all we want.
Anyone desiring to address the commission?
Frank Jepertl, 350 East Ridge, Marquette, these are my opinions. We thank Ms. Hill for mentioning lands that we really care about in response to lakefront erosion that takes more of our park by the storm. Who, though, is "we"? She cares, the majority of us care, but I believe this is a low priority for certain members. Why else would they sit idle while we lost a quarter acre of park and Lake Shore Boulevard was closed numerous times? Years passed under public protest before we hired a consultant. Four members have wasted time by repeating criticism that's already been addressed. Mrs. Frazier, Schlegel, Campana, and Ms. Reynolds. They must love hearing me repeat myself. They're either trying to mess with me, or they're tripping out. We sure can't blame the legal weed. Not only is there no place to get any, but it doesn't mess you up that badly. Mr. Frazier again missed the gist of my concerns about 340 East Ridge, the bluff destruction and missing sidewalk squares. I care little about the house, mentioned only because of his misstatement about the previous house. He also misspoke about our acre of lost beach that he said wasn't used much. Although I agree with the Coast Guard location, the beach was loved and used by many, especially dog owners. He again wondered why I mentioned the ills of previous boards, forgetting my prior response that this is a single dynamic board. The seats are perpetual, only the faces change. Those who don't wish to sit in a sordid seat are urged not to run. Without judging our new member, recent boards have perpetuated the sins of past boards. The mentality remains the same to the detriment of those who live here for the natural beauty. Past errors must never be forgotten, not only to keep us grounded, but to relate past errors to present ones to illustrate this board's ongoing proclivities. And for my own benefit, divulging these patterns as history unfolds proves I was right all along. Had we seen improvement, my tone would have improved, but we've consecutively seen five of the worst boards in my 21 years of involvement, except for the one meeting that Mr. Baldini ran flawlessly. The only positive change worth mentioning is our seating of three women for the first time, although two act noticeably subordinate to the men. Mr. Schlegel keeps ripping me for not attending planning meetings when I've explained that my volunteer time is limited, and that so long as members don't listen, it's a better use of time to speak at televised meetings. I tried to respond positively, even agreed with him, but now I must ask him to mind his own business. Fittingly, the sign outside our chambers read "unoccupied" throughout our last meeting. Fitting, because one member was absent, another was interrupted by the manager, and the chair performed unrelated work during two-thirds of my public comment, which is the same as what he did during most of this one. And only seven residents attended out of 22,000, two of whom left after their comments. Who can blame them?
Anyone else to address the commission? Hearing none, I close public comment. City manager, we've had a number of questions from the different parent groups in the Hockeyville group. If you would be so good as to please address those now. Ladies and gentlemen, we don't typically do this. We typically keep directly and strictly to the agenda. I will, however, in this instance, break the agenda to allow the city manager to answer your questions directly. City manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll start the conversation, and I'll defer to John to fill in some of the blanks, but some of this stuff has already been mentioned, but I was involved. I was a city manager at the time that Hockeyville came about. Thank you, folks, for participating. I really appreciate all that. But about the same time came the JCI project. It wasn't something that we had planned, but it was something that we took on and had to deal with. And I, at that time, instructed Parks and Rec not to spend any of the JC, I'm sorry, not to spend any of the Hockeyville money, because I didn't know what we were going to do with the JCI money. I knew in general terms, but not completely. And what I didn't want to happen was for that, your $100,000 or our $150,000, to be spent and wasted, wasted on something that JCI would just tear out and put a new one in, or we could pay for it with our money instead of yours. It was that simple. I made it a special effort to address the Lakeview Arena, because I knew the chillers and compressors were failing. They were cannibalizing. They were cannibalizing one to make another one work. Ice quality was poor, and I'd gotten, frankly, I'd gotten tired of hearing about it as a resident and city manager for a number of years, that the Lakeview Arena was falling apart. So we probably made an investment in just about the most expensive piece of equipment we have there. And I guess I thought it might pacify people. We spent $3.5 million on compressors, chillers, HVAC, dehumidification, lights. We had to put in a new lift station for the waste treatment system. And yet, yes, they're not things that you can see, but they're what's necessary to make the Lakeview run. So I'll kind of leave my comments there, but I take responsibility for making the delay happen. I thought I did it as a responsible move. I still feel like it was responsible. After all, I spend other people's money, and I want to make sure that I spend it the right way. You know, it's kind of a habit we've gotten into around here. One other point, and maybe John can address this in more detail, but, you know, the Lakeview Arena does not pay for itself. You folks bring in revenue, it's greatly appreciated, but we still contribute a significant amount of money each year out of the general fund, just to keep it afloat. You know, I don't say that as a, for any other reason than to say it's very difficult to make money at running an ice arena. We're also hoping that the construction that we have done will save us from raising ice prices, ice hours, ice time. You know, they're, it's kind of the way we've been looking at it. So, John, take her from there.
Thank you, city manager. I guess I'd like to start by thanking everybody that's here and everybody that you know that went in and dedicated the hours and voted and cheered when we won and was a huge part of making this thing happen. I think that, as a community, this is something we can be really, really proud of. Unfortunately, we have not spent the money yet, and I say that unfortunately, simply because that's just the way the timing was, and I think the city manager addressed that very well. The JCI project, $3.5 million that have gone into that, really, I think we're going to realize some huge savings on the electric bill and then on things like the compressors. So we used to have four compressors that were kind of like car engines in that building, and those units would have to be rebuilt every year or every other year at a cost of about $20,000 or so. So we now have two high-tech units that should never need to be rebuilt, or on a 25-year basis. So that in and of itself, combined with efficiencies of all of those improvements, we hope will help allow us to focus on some of the ancillary things, instead of just spending the money to keep the building open, keep the doors open. We're hoping that that $3.5 million would go a long ways toward allowing us to start focusing capital projects on the things you see every day. So, those pieces. A good example of why we waited to address the Hockeyville dollars until the JCI project was over. One of the items that has kind of been up in the air, and we didn't really know until the project was complete with the JCI, was whether or not it was going to address some of the issues we have with the showers. So a lot of times, you'll have fluctuating water temperatures. Sometimes there's no hot water whatsoever. And that project, that was something that, in the end, they couldn't do. That was something JCI wasn't going to be able to do. So what we're doing now, that we've completed the GCI project, or almost completed it, is we're looking at, you know, partnering with the Friends of Lakeview to, we have some estimates on replacing all the shower mixer valves, going through that and actually making those locker rooms functional in a way that, you know, makes everybody happy. Nobody likes a cold shower after a long night on the ice. So that's just one good example of something that we needed to see how those two projects were going to kind of come together to make it happen. We still do have the money in an account, and so as we mentioned, $3.5 million, and you almost don't even notice, right? Maybe the ice is a lot better condition, the lighting's a lot different, and so I think that you probably appreciate that. But $3.5 million is a lot of money. $150,000 is not a lot of money. So what I really want to do is make sure that we get the best bang for the buck with that. So we have to finish and submit the five-year Recreation Master Plan to the state with all of the items that we have planned for Lakeview listed in the capital section. So we've got a good amount of items in that section, as, if we hope to apply for grants. So the best-case scenario is we take the prize money, we match it with a grant, and then we get a good project. Some of the things there on the top of staff's list, as we look at Lakeview Arena. When the locker rooms were constructed, that seating was pushed back, making it virtually not useful at all for watching the game and watching the action on the ice. So we'd like to, you know, address that and find a way to move that seating forward. The horseshoe bleachers on the other end of the arena are in bad need of repair, so that's a high priority as well. We do have the parking lot hanging over, but, you know, some of these items, I don't want to spend Hockeyville dollars on something like that, if we can avoid it. I'd like it to be something that is visual and that you can see and touch and use every day. One of the other high-priority items is replacing the actual dasher boards in the Russell. So we know those are getting toward the end of their lifespan. All of those items are going to be well over, you know, $150,000. So that is why we want to maximize those dollars as best we can, match them with a grant if possible, to make that happen, and hopefully partner with some of the funds that the Friends of Lakeview Arena have. So what we're doing right now, we have a, we're drafting a request for proposals for an engineer to look at the seating in the arena and give us some cost estimates on that, and from that, we can decide what's the best bang for the buck with those dollars.
Can you, John, can you talk to the Zamboni question and maybe the bathroom? Do you know what's going on with the bathrooms?
Yeah, so the Zamboni, we did do some repairs that were necessary and kind of got those machines, so we'd guarantee no failures during the, well, as close as you can guarantee on an older Zamboni. No failures during the NHL game, but we are scheduled to replace the Zambonis. So we have some funds in a replacement fund for that, and that could be a good use for the dollars, though I'd like to see something that everybody could touch a little bit more. New Zambonis are about $120,000. I think we have about $75,000 in the replacement fund, so we're looking at that in the next budget cycle. We may or may not use Hockeyville dollars to address that. I'm leaning toward not. The restroom is an unfortunate... The restroom is an unfortunate thing, so with an aging building, aging plumbing structure, when our maintenance crews have to do something like replace a sink valve, it's not like your house where you go out to Lowe's and you pick one off the shelf and you put it in. They're unique fixtures, unique spaces from a long time ago on their commercial grade. So we've gotten three of those sinks in, and they weren't what the manufacturer specified that they would be. So we have, I think we have the right one on order now, and we're hoping to have that in soon. So unfortunately, sometimes these sinks come up, and the health department won't allow us to have a bathroom open if it doesn't have a sink, so that's why that one's closed. And we hate to have something like that hang out this long, but sometimes that's the nature of the beast with an older building like that. But the guys are working hard to get that addressed, and we appreciate your patience on that.
Thank you. Questions from the commission when we get the question time at the end of the meeting? So I would ask to hold those until that point. That brings us now to the consent agenda. Remember, we have canceled the Press Kyle Advisory Committee presentation, so we're now on item three, the consent agenda. I need a motion to approve the agenda, please. Mayor Protem, please.
I move that we can approve the consent agenda.
May I have a second, please? Commissioner Frazier.
Second.
We will not do a vote at this point because it's a roll call requirement.
And that agenda should be approved as amended.
Say what? Oh, okay. We have a motion then to approve the agenda as amended, correct?
Yes.
We'll call it that. Are you ready for a roll call?
It's under.
So move.
Unless there's no discussion.
Say again?
Unless there's no discussion.
Unless there's no discussion. We're driving a train.
Got it. Commissioner Campana?
Yes.
Commissioner Frazier?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Reynolds?
Yes.
And Mayor Stonehouse?
Yes. Brings us back to public comment. Comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Please state your name and physical address. Say again? I'm one agenda behind, folks. That brings us to new business, new business. Madam Clerk, if you would please read the NAS backup system.
Thank you, Mayor Background. The city's multiple backup data storage systems are at an end of their useful life and are scheduled to be replaced. IT staff recommends replacing these multiple storage systems with a redundant IX Systems Network Attached System, NAS. The NAS will replace the following servers: the NAS server for police video evidence, the HP server that backs up data on the telephone server, main file server, engineering server, and finance server, and the external hard drives used for weekly and monthly backups to off-site storage. The cost of replacing each of the individual servers is greater than the cost of the proposed IX system and is expected to reduce the amount of staff support required to maintain it. The new technology will give the city enhanced high-speed data protection as well as provide necessary redundancy. IT staff has obtained two quotes for the IX Systems NAS and a quote for a similar system from Synology. IX Systems, $13,986.28. Manufacturer quoted MSRP. SHI, $11,382. SHI, working with IX Systems, quoted a lower price. Synology, $15,211.72. Not same system, but comparable in component size and scope. CDWG and Command Vault cannot recommend a similar system to meet our requirements. No quote could be obtained. Fiscal effect: funding to lease the NAS backup system is contained in the current year's budget. The equipment will be purchased and leased back to the city by CCA Financial at a monthly cost of $261 over 48 months at an interest rate of 4.99%. Recommendation: approve the proposal from SHI and authorize the city manager or his designee to sign a 48-month lease with CCA Financial for the IX Systems NAS for a total lease cost not to exceed $12,528. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you, Commissioners. We do have the IT director here. If you have any specific questions, you would like to direct to him. Are there any questions to direct to the IT director? If not, if I may have a motion to accept this item, motion to proceed with it. Commissioner Schlegel?
Make a motion to, do you want me to go further than what you're asking there, Mr. Mayor, as far as that, making the recommendation? Making the recommendation to approve the proposal from SHI and authorize the city manager or his designee to sign the 48-month lease with CCA Financial and IX Systems NAS for a total lease cost not to exceed $12,528.
May I have a second, please? Commissioner Frazier?
Second.
Commissioner Schlegel, any further comments?
None, thank you.
Commissioner Frazier?
Going to get the cities backed up?
Commissioners, all those commissioners in favor for this motion, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. Any commissioner opposed to the motion, please signify by saying no. Hearing none, the motion passes 7-0. That brings us down to item five, long-line traffic markings contract. Madam Clerk, if you would please read the item.
Thank you, Mayor Background. The city traffic markings require annual repainting when using waterborne paint. The harsh winters and winter maintenance operations remove most of the paint by spring. The Department of Public Works has contracted out these services for several years. The long lines, center lines, lane lines work, has worked out and will continue to be outsourced. In recent years, the city has only received one bid for this type of service and has been unable to locate other potential bidders for this type of work, and staff is therefore recommending that the competitive bidding process be waived. Early in the winter, PK Contracting contacted city staff and indicated that their paint supplier costs will be increasing for 2019. PK indicated that they would hold the 2018 pricing of interested parties committed by the end of January. Fiscal effect: the major street fund capital outlay budget for fiscal year 1819 contains $45,000 for traffic marking equipment and materials. Recommendation: waive the competitive bidding process and approve a contract for long-line traffic marking painting with PK Contracting Inc. of Lake City, Michigan, in an amount not to exceed $30,000 at the unit prices quoted. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Commissioners, but before I ask for a vote, city manager, do you have a comment to make on this?
Just a real short one, that it's nice that we're getting this done earlier this year. Normally, the fair citizens of this community haven't been able to realize street painting until it snows. So with this purchase, we should be able to get going in May or June.
Commissioners, if I may have a motion on this item. Commissioner Campana?
I move that we waive the competitive bidding process and approve a contract for long-line traffic marking painting with PK Contracting Incorporated of Lake City, Michigan, in an amount not to exceed $30,000 at the unit prices quoted.
Just for a second. Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Commissioner Campana, any further comments?
Actually, I do have a question. The city is doing their own painting on intersections at this time. I understand, right?
Well, yes, we do the turns, arrows, and parking spaces and stuff, and this company just does the center lines.
Any chance that the city's going to, at some point, take over doing the long line? Or is that not a possibility?
It's unlikely. That equipment is pretty expensive and specialized, so I doubt we'd want to venture into that. When we can do it for $45,000 a year, it's a lot cheaper than buying the equipment.
Okay. Good with that.
Commissioner Smith, any comments?
I didn't have any comments, but you just said $45,000, and this says $30,000. You threw me off, Mike.
Sorry, it was budgeted $45,000, but this contract is for not to exceed $30,000.
Thank you for clarifying.
You're correct.
That's all.
All those commissioners in favor of this motion, please signify by saying yes.
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 Any commissioner against the motion, please signify by saying no. Hearing none, motion passes 7-0. That brings us to public comments. Comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Please state your name and physical address when making public comments. Anyone desiring to address the commission?
Sonia Delis, 1441 State Highway M28 East, out in Chalkley Township. Just questions and comments, I guess, in regards to the information about Lakeview Arena. You stated that seating needs to be fixed because of when they put in the locker rooms. Since Northern has left that building, and we no longer have an electrician, hockey team, AAA midget, we don't always have that big of crowds. The crowds that we get probably take up just the south side of the rink. You have the west end, all that bleachers right there for overflow. A lot of people like to stand. They like to stand along the rail. Coaches don't like people behind the boxes.
If I may interrupt, just one second. Comments should be addressed at the front.
Oh, sorry. So, coaches don't like people sitting up behind the benches, because then you're distracting the players, you're distracting them. Also, you mentioned parking lot. I mean, is the parking lot really that necessary? If it's dirt, you can just, you know, grate it and get rid of all the holes that happen throughout the seasons, whatnot. It seems like the top priority things aren't really top priorities. You want to spend money to have an engineer come in and figure out what needs to be done? Work with Market Junior Hockey Board and just go down there and see. You can walk in at any time and see, looking around, what needs to be done without spending not to exceed $10,000 on an engineer. I think that would be a cost-saving thing right there for you. I noticed on your master plan also that is to be done, I think it's February of 2019, that you have on there staging for Lakeview Arena. You know, what would you need staging for at Lakeview Arena? You have staging already there? Why would you need to upgrade the staging when there's nothing ever there besides graduation that would require staging? You know, it would just kind of, sounds like it's not necessary, again. The dasher boards, I thought they were replaced when we took on the Hockeyville game, so why would those need to be replaced again within three years? When you're watching a hockey game, watching your kids play on the Olson Arena, and you can't see through the glass, it's a joke because you're sitting there diving to see, to get a good spot, to be able to look through the glass. That's something that needs to be done, not replace the dasher boards over in the Russell Rink. That's all.
Thank you. Anyone else desiring to address the commission?
Greg Mingay, 606 Oak. A couple of comments. One, it's said a couple of times, $150,000 is not a lot of money. Maybe relative to the $3 million, that might, that's a correct statement, but $150,000 is a lot of money. If not, I'll ask for one of you folks to make a check out to me while you're sitting there for $150,000, and then you'll say, well, that is a lot of money. Anyway, I'm interested in a couple of things. The communication between the city and the interested parties involving Hockeyville. It seems rather apparent that there hasn't been a lot of communication, otherwise there wouldn't be a lot of folks here. If there has been communication, how quick was the response after the communication has gone from one party to the other? Is there a conflict in projects? Is the city asking for one thing and Hockeyville group asking for another? I, I'm not involved with any of the groups, but there also seems to be something, there seems to be a lack of communication someplace. Otherwise, this group of people wouldn't be here this evening, and if that question could be answered, I'm sure it would solve a lot of problems. Thank you.
Thank you.
Matt Luttenberger, 1406 Garfield Ave., here in the city of Marquette. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for explaining why the camera is only from behind. I'll be honest, I wanted to be kind of selfish tonight, and on Christmas, my great aunt passed away, who was a nun, who was very big into government advocacy and mediations, and she was really the one who pushed me into running for city government. So with that, though, I come to you because it seems like a lot of these issues that I've heard on this discussion tonight are never going to be solved by the elected officials. And I don't mean that in any derogatory term. I mean that in the sense that you shouldn't be deciding where $150,000 for, goes towards repairs at Lakeview Arena. I don't want you deciding any of that. I'd like to have committees. I'd like to have more committees. I know it's tough to fill the committees that we have, but an ad hoc committee can be filled with at least, I'd say, six, seven dedicated individuals who are willing to write down recommendations for you. And that's what brings me up again for, I want to first off, again, sorry. Hockeyville, I wish you guys the best of luck. Lakeview Arena needs a committee dedicated to improvements because the Mutineers had a great game, loved it, enjoyed my time, really understand why these folks are here today. So that being said, as far as committees go, some of the decisions you're going to make have a timeliness to it. Thanks to Mr. Pugh from the Mining Journal, covering your work session for the medical marijuana or the recreational marijuana discussion. Since it's not online, I couldn't really figure out if you've had any discussion about the positive impacts of the finances. And I don't mean what we said in the state. I mean in the sense that, right now, I was presented with a plan that said, hey, open up a building, let us process other people's recreational marijuana. Well, until you opt in, I can't look at properties in the city of Marquette. I can't suggest properties in the city of Marquette. It's not a simple task. There's armed guards, there's at least four workers, there's employees who are going to actually have to be well-versed in what is and is not appropriate. It's bigger than a White's party store, is my point. And I mean this in a real sense. This is somebody's backyard project, but at the same time, it's completely legal. You don't have an option to turn it off. You don't have a way to say, oh, well, you can't buy that. It's going to be in November, and I'd like to see the city take it up as more than just a party store or specialty store type of event. It is a big event, and I want to transfer a lot of the hemp fiber that we get from that into fibers that Jacowat can make Stormy Cromers. Thank you for your time.
Amanda Bierman, 410 East Ohio Street. I just want to make one more comment. And so you said that Marquette, Lakeview Arena, doesn't support itself. We all understand that. We all know that what we pay in ice fees does not support that building, but that's what a city is. A city is run by tax revenue. A city is run by the taxpayers of the entire city. And so when somebody says to me that, well, that building doesn't support itself, so you guys aren't going to get the things you need for that to run properly, to look properly, to be how it should be, it kind of makes us feel like that we're less valued as the hockey community, as our kids that play in that building. Soccer fields and the parks and the trails and the shoreline, those are all things that are subsidized by the city taxes. And Lakeview Arena is just one of those things that's subsidized by our taxes, and it should be cared for just as much as all the rest of the resources of the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Verdo. These are my opinions. December 17th, Mr. Campana wisely stated that the rules should include language to protect audience and community members. The attorney responded that language is already written into the rules, but that's not clear to the two of us. There's too much subjectivity, as we noticed the few times the issue arose. I'm one of the few who's been bad. I'm one of the few who's been bad-mouthed by another commenter, two in fact. Two different chairs cared less, so I warned this board, including two current members, that I'd respond harshly if the one instigator kept alluding to me negatively. The boards in action not only encouraged him to keep it up, but provoked my promised reaction. Of course, the chairs only noticed the latter, because they're often performing unrelated tasks during public comment. The refusal to objectively resolve the situation behind the scenes only exacerbated it, as our record shows. Had rules to protect us existed, we could have nipped this in the bud years earlier, even with no written rule needed. However, in this case, it was needed, because this board played favorites, refusing to acknowledge both sides of the issue. Of course, rarely as this happens, it's not likely worth writing in. Two residents mentioned our need for rules of conduct for board members. Our attorney said they must abide by even stricter rules, which read, quote, "The presiding officer shall enforce orderly conduct at meetings, and any member of the commission or other officer who shall fail to conduct himself in an orderly manner at the meeting shall be deemed guilty of misconduct in office." I respectfully disagree with our attorney. If members are indeed held to stricter standards, this implores us to analyze Ms. Reynolds' behavior on October ninth, when she brought up an incident that occurred at a store at least fourteen years ago, that had zilch to do with my involvement here. I mean, that was out of line. The rules ought to also protect us from the lie that I personally insulted two officials' wives with no examples provided. I mean, that was preposterous. Unless she apologizes tonight, I'll lodge the two complaints to test whether what our attorney told us holds water under such blatant examples, unless Ms. Reynolds is able to clarify herself. Even worse, the manager interrupted Ms. Smith midway through my December seventeenth comment about a matter that didn't seem important or germane to the meeting. This means that with Ms. Reynolds' absence, and Mr. Stonehouse goofing off, only four of the seven heard the comment that I spent hours preparing, and not the manager either. Mr. Stonehouse was oblivious, because he was looking down and cared less anyway. He was also oblivious to me standing up to remind the clerk that he forgot to call two people who'd reserved time, which led to confusion between the participants. Chairs are human and are allowed to forget. The trouble is, the record shows that neither he nor Mr. Campana value public comment. And to have spaced out two agenda items tonight is a whole different matter.
Oh, sorry. I raised my hand. Kristen Cambenzie, eleven twenty-five County Road four ninety-two, in the township of Marquette. I just want to thank you guys for hearing us out and answering some of the questions that we had. I do think that better dialogue is definitely needed between the city and the different groups, the Friends of Lakeview, and, you know, our Hockeyville Committee. A few things, though. The Friends of Lakeview, we did come to city staff and say, you know, hey, we would love to pay for, you know, redoing the front lobby, or even just buying tables and chairs. Something that wouldn't be a huge impact with the Johnson Control stuff, but would be a huge bonus for all the families that use the arena. The furniture that is in there right now, if you've been in there in a while, it's old outdoor patio furniture. It's heavy, it's big, it has lots of holes in it, you cannot put a drink down without it spilling. You cannot do homework on there, because the pencil will go right through the paper. You know, just simple changes like that, which wouldn't cost a lot of money, would be something that the Friends of Lakeview, or community members, would be willing to pay for, that would make a big difference. I have three boys in hockey. We travel all over the U.P. going to games. It's kind of sad when you walk into one of the other arenas, like, say, the D, and they have brand-new bathrooms. And if you had ever been in those old bathrooms, they were gross. They had carpets, and you're just like, why would you have carpet in a bathroom? It makes no sense. But they completely redid it, and it's beautiful. You walk in there, you're like, wow, this is so nice. You walk into the Coliseum in Calumet, and they've completely redone their lobby area. And it's something that you immediately notice. And it's like, we walk into there, we're like, whoa, did they win Hockeyville? Because they have all these nice upgrades that they've done, just small little things that make a huge difference. And yet, you walk into our building, and, you know, yes, there was tons of stuff done to it, but it's not something you can readily see. And we would just like to have some small things that are readily seen by anybody that walks into the building completed. And we know that you guys want to try to, you know, maximize your money, but let us, let the community, let the Friends of Lakeview, do some of these small projects and take something off of your plate. It's listed on your master plan as one of the items that you want to get done, is redoing the concession area. Well, let us do something that we can have some pride in, too. We raise the money for Lakeview. We want to be able to spend it at Lakeview. So we would really hope that you would allow us to do something like that, or at least talk about it a little bit more.
Well, I didn't plan on saying much. There wasn't much to have here tonight. I do thank the residents and users of Lakeview Arena for coming here. It's important that we hear your questions and complaints and praises. I think that we are aware of what you're saying. We always have been. And in defense of the city, we have always been aware of problems at Lakeview. We have always talked, we knew what we were going to do with the money. We knew where the money was from Kraft Hockeyville all the time. We knew it wasn't being stashed away or not planned to be used. We were aware of what the planned use was. And what happened is, the city was very fortunate to have Johnson Controls come in with their program and do many things for the city of Marquette. Obviously, they upgraded infrastructure all across the city. Streetlights, city building, HVAC in different buildings, and especially in Lakeview. Not to be a bad guy, but I will say that when I was first, six years ago, when I came on the commission, Lakeview was running a deficit of four hundred thousand, or thereabouts, four hundred thousand dollars a year out of the general fund. We had to take money out and put it towards Lakeview. I believe it is now down to like two fifty. John could probably verify that. But, I mean, we're getting better, and with Johnson Control, I understand now, with the new equipment in place, we are saving money, it's going to get better. But it's going to take a lot of money to do a lot of things there. The parking lot was brought up, and the parking lot is immensely expensive to replace, and you got to replace it. It's probably ten years past its useful life right now. There are some giant manholes in there, and to replace it, I think, is a million? A million? Eight hundred thousand? Okay, that's pretty close. So, you know, we've got some money problems here, but I agree. Lakeview is a draw point for people to come to Marquette. It should be a good example for Marquette. I would like to see the little things done, yes. Those are the things that make it attractive. People take notice, and it would make Marquette look like a better place. So, I would hope that we can get some of these things done. One last thing, the hundred and fifty thousand, I believe we spent sixty thousand of that right now, we're down to ninety thousand. I understand that we want to use that to leverage grants, so we can get more money. I mean, we can't spend it outright right now. I think it makes, to me, it makes more sense to apply for a grant, and you got to come up with matching money. And now, instead of having ninety thousand to spend, you got, you know, two hundred thousand to spend, and it'll go towards Lakeview Arena. So, we're trying to do the best here. But it's good to hear your concerns, and I hope that we can, you know, accomplish some of them. So, thank you for coming. That's all I got.
I guess I'm up next. Thank you for all the people coming, that you appreciate your support, and love to see what everybody has to say, because I know Lakeview Arena is going down, has gone downhill for many years, but we're trying to get it better. And I give my, I'm a boater, been a boater my whole life. I use the boating analogy. A boat is a, they say, it's a hole in the water to, which you sink money into. You store it for half the year, and just sit in the water, and same thing, the boaters all tell me, is why won't you make the marinas nicer? Reuse the marinas, we pay a lot of money, so the city decided, okay, we'll make all the boaters pay for the marinas, pay for updating the marinas. That's all, the boaters complained about that. So, okay, we'll have to pay for it, that's fine. And same thing with hockey. Hockey, it's your thing. Boating's my thing. So, we'd love to see everything going on, but let's see, I didn't, before I got in commissions, like Dave said, he got it six years ago, it got on back in two thousand and fourteen. You learn how the city works. I was on a board, I was on Pikeback back in the day, and we decided, let's build a new playground at Preskill Park, just to, because it's outdated, we needed a playground. Who would love to have a playground? You know, it's for kids. I'd love it, you know, but then we said, let's raise money to do it. Then we had a board member that was partially in a wheelchair. We said, let's make it, you know, handicap accessible. It's a great idea. Started researching on my own time, I put, I go researching playgrounds. It doubled the money making it accessible, like double or triple the money. Work consultants, all that stuff. Like, ours, that was ten years ago. The city's finally about ready to do it. They moved the playground to Matson Park, because Matson Park Playground was built voluntarily back in the day, and it's falling apart, so you're using that money to do that. So same thing, I'm certainly going, well, the city, just do it, just hire a grant, you know. So, the city's got lots of stuff going on. We got parks, roads, everybody complains about everything, you know, it's, we understand. I'm the city way. You know, I'm like, can't just fix this? City just does it as they could. Another thing, so, look at Lakeview Arena as like a car. If your engine's not running right, or the tires are bad, would you just paint it to make it look good? Or would you fix the stuff first in the inside, and work your way out to the outside? That's what, thanks to the city's trying to do right now, is they said, okay, supply stuff that we can use the most, make it more energy efficient, make the thing work better, like make the ice better, make everything better, then work your way on everything else. So, the city's got a plan, it's taken a while, it's frustrating, you know, from the outside. You see it all the time, you know, as a boater, I see, I have friends in the marina all the time complaining, you know, this doesn't work, and, you know, people come to visit Lakeview Arena from out of town, great, they come to enjoy the city. Seeing the boaters come in from out of town, and they go to the marinas. And up at the Upper Harbor, which is getting finally replaced, it's only been, my grandparents are in there back, it's like fifty-plus years old, they're finally replacing it. It needs upgrading. If I, and, you know, I have friends who've been boating up there for years, they say, other people going to visit, why isn't it be working here? So, the city's just trying to figure out where they can spend money, and it'll get done eventually. I know it's frustrating, you think you could raise money, just do it yourself. Easy, I changed the same thing when I was a playground member, board member. You can't just do it that way, because city has, you know, we waived the fee for street line parking, the competitive bit, because you can't just put a table in there, say, these people bought it, because the city has rules they have to follow. The city's got all kinds of funky rules. You learn that being in the inside, seeing all the stuff, but we'll get it done eventually, it's just going to take time, but hopefully it'll get done and look pretty.
Thank you, I've got four things. First, I want to say, me, the Hockeyville, I'm the newest person, hi. Go over the podium. And no, I haven't spent much time in Hockeyville, or in Lakeview Arena, I'll be, it's true. And I, but, I was a jock when I was in high school, I was athlete of the year when I graduated from my high school. I was in the gym for five hours every night after school. I, there was only three weeks of the year that I wasn't in the gym after school when I was going to high school. And my mom was the one who organized for us to get new uniforms, and helped us pay, she ran the concession stand. So I really appreciate what you're doing, and what you're doing for your kids, and coming to bat for them in this situation. And I know the staff is trying, as we work through this long process, and I'm not, you guys are, and it sounds like there might be opportunities for better communication. I hope we can move forward from this conversation tonight to make that better for both, for everybody. I really, because it took a lot for you guys to come here, and I, again, from bottom of my heart, I really appreciate what you're doing, because that's what my mom did for me. And so, and, and yes, I think we can get tables for homework. I mean, come on. I, that's where I did my homework, was I used to have to sit on the bus for two, three hours at a time, I was in Indiana, and I'd have to, I'd go to school, and then I got on the bus, and then I'd play basketball, and I got back on the bus, and I went home, and then I went to school the next day. So, I want to, and I think we're going to come out, and what, and I voted, but I did vote, I sat there and texted for Hockeyville, I did vote, and so I did something to help for that. And thank you for all that work, and let's see if we can't get a good outcome out of this. That was number one. Number two is Wednesday is the Parks and Rec Master Plan Work Session. Looking at John. Yes, so at five o'clock downstairs in room one oh three, and one more chance to speak Oh, is it, I thought, okay, sorry. It says, it actually says on the city's website that it's in room one oh three in the city hall.
Yeah, Wednesday, room one oh three, city hall, five thirty.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Or five fifteen, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Parks and Rec, thanks. So there's another, and I, on Facebook, there were some comments about the, there's folks also interested in an off-leash dog park, and I know City Band is interested in what's happening with the place where they play out at Preskill Park. So yeah, so lots of great projects to get organized around for the Parks and Rec Master Plan. Again, that's the sixteenth at five fifteen here in city hall. And then coming up on Saturday, there's two events. First, there, we're going to have another Women's March. That's not an official city event, but a community-wide event for sure, starting at twelve thirty in the Commons, with the march at one thirty. It's going to be cold, wear your layers. And then that night, very exciting, is the City Art Awards, the terrific arts and culture community that we have here. We're going to have eleven folks who are being awarded for all their great contributions to the arts and culture here in Marquette. That's going to be in the community room in the library at seven thirty on Saturday night.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to say thank you to the Hockeyville supporters, Lakeview supporters that came out tonight, and for taking an active role in our community. Next on my list for the week is to read the three hundred and twenty-two-page, five-year recreation master plan. I started this weekend, but the online version was giving me trouble, so I asked for a paper copy that we're sharing here in the commission. So, this does include Lakeview Arena. There's a lot of other priorities on this list, but I am interested to see kind of how that plays into things, and I know you guys brought some good points that I'm going to kind of ask city staff about afterwards. I do want to ask one quick question of the city manager, maybe, and his comments, and maybe Mr. Swenson as well, the holdup on the tables, because I'm hearing that a lot, the homework table. So if we can hear the other side of that story, I'd love that. We did have a work session about recreational marijuana last week, and I am, after mulling it over, hoping we can start to prepare documents to be ready to opt in sooner than later. So, just wanted to throw that out there. I also wanted to show, shout out to the crews keeping the roads clear with ice and snow. Thank them for all they do to keep us safe on the road. That's all I've got today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a really tough one, because my background is kind of an energy efficiency guy. So, when we got the J.C. program, there's projects set up for the city of Marquette, I was one of those dorks that sat there and thought that this was the best thing that came around, because we were going to be more efficient, all of these things. And I'm really excited, and I'm very proud of the way that the city went about going through and detailing the, call it the low-hanging fruit, the stuff that made the most sense to replace with those monies. And a lot of that didn't entail work at Lakeview. So, I'm not going to go over it again, we all know, it's the boring stuff, it's the stuff behind doors that you don't see, but it's also the most important thing when it comes to running and making sure that your killer little kids have awesome ice to get out there and tear it up. So with that being said, I really hope, nothing that anybody else has already kind of reiterated here, but we need to have some better communication between the groups. You know, the, whether it be the Hockeyville Group, Friends of Lakeview, you know, give me a reason to give you fifty bucks towards some new tables, and come and see me, and I'll do that, because I, that drives me nuts. You know, I don't have a hockey player in the family, but I know that as much time as you guys put in, we got to have some place for these kids to spend that time, and to be able to tackle the homework, because they're, you parents are pulling them in different directions every stinking weekend. How do you get up and do that? And get to somewhere for eight in the morning up in Calumet to play hockey? Let alone kids with skates on? I mean, I'd be right across here, I'd be a dead man at my house if I tried to pull that off. Point being, there's, especially if you guys are willing to do some fundraising above and beyond, or in conjunction with the stuff that you've already done, there has to be certain things that we can do for the kids. Now, you also have to keep in mind... Now, you also have to keep in mind, everything that you do inside of that concession area has to be food safe, has to be FDA, you know, when the food inspector comes in, all these little tiny things are going to make it even more of a pain in the butt for you to accomplish these things. You're opening up a whole nother can of worms in respect to that. So that's stuff that you're going to have to be prepared to handle as well. And it's going to slow things down, and I get it. Your kids, you know, your kids are playing hockey for how many years? You want to see reap some of the rewards of your hard work and fundraising and that, so that they can be there for it. But there will be a point when you're going to sit there in, I hope, less than, less than five years, that if your kids aren't playing anymore, they're going to be able to take their kids there and look back and look at the great work that you guys were responsible for spearheading, leaving that legacy behind. That's the important stuff that you have to keep in mind as well. And, you know, work with the city on this stuff. And John, I don't want your job. You can have it, man. You know, if there's something as small as better chairs or tables like that, and these guys were willing to do it, whatever we can do to kind of, you got to have some tangible stuff. You got to have something that you can say, look at what we did right now, versus a chiller that I would go back and look at and drool over for 20 minutes. So that's what I've got to say, and thank you guys for your input tonight, I appreciate it. We're all here for you as well, and it's not anything new. So, thank you.
Well, I also appreciate you all for coming. I think it's fairly clear from most of us that have spoken, and I echo the sentiments of Commissioner Schlegel. You guys worked really hard on this, and I know that you want to see the fruits of your labor. I imagine if I worked on something this hard and got all this money, I'd want to see it for my kids, too. So I understand from that perspective, and also, it's been some time. So I think it's probably clear to the city manager and John that maybe we can start coming up with things, just starting off of a small kind of list to maybe get somewhere with this. So I think at least a majority of us would appreciate seeing that. Other than that, I don't really have any other comments, because we talked a lot about Lakeview Arena tonight, and I think a lot of my commissioners hit the poignant parts. The only other comment I'm going to make this evening is that my daughter's sitting back there, and I'm really proud of her for being silent the entire meeting and being a good kid. So I think she gets ice cream in the morning, because I had to bring her with me tonight, didn't have a choice. So that's all I have for this evening.
I'm not going there, but, you know, we all know that the city works to a plan. We work to big plans, we work to little plans, five-year plans, we've got some plans that even go a little bit beyond that. And that becomes critical to us, as to how we spend their money, how we maximize the money, how we do the budgeting to get the final job done. We understand that, all of us do. But what I'm going to propose and suggest that the city does, because we understand that perception is often taken to be reality. So what you do that can be cosmetic, what you do that can be a small thing, can be a big victory, and it can have large influence. So my suggestion to the city would be to see if we can get together with the groups and come up with some things, and it's been suggested, tables, chairs, as an example, but I'm sure there's other things, too, that are small comparatively, that are benign, that by spending that money, we're not really risking a great opportunity to multiply it with another grant, but we are providing something that shows that we're using it, that we're working to a different level of plan. Does that make sense? In other words, a small success can be very valuable as much as a big one in five years. So let's see if we can get a couple of those small successes now that we can build on for the future. So that's my suggestion. And other than that, city manager, your turn.
Yes, the message is clear. John and I will be talking tomorrow and probably after that. But just one final comment to clarify a point. When I mentioned that the Lakeview Arena does not pay for itself, and maybe I didn't say it very clearly, but what I was trying to point out was that we still, even though it doesn't pay for itself, we still want to put money into it. It was important for us to, and the commission at the time, to support a project of $3.5 million to keep it running, even though it doesn't pay for itself. That was all I was trying to make, and it probably wasn't clear, and I certainly didn't mean to belittle anybody. And I've got, that's all.